All right, seven o'clock, we're gonna call the January 21 Windsor Township Planning Commission to order. We're gonna start off with the reorganization. What do I do there?
So you need to entertain nominations for Chair.
Chair first?
Chair first.
We're gonna entertain nominations for Chair person.
What are you doing?
Chairman.
Yes.
I know I'm named John.
Yeah.
So I can keep it the same, but I mean, unless you don't wanna...
I mean, I'll keep doing it if nobody else wants to take the role.
Just do it.
Do I do it?
No, I second him.
I made a motion.
I motioned. I then Paulus.
Do I need to accept then?
You need to do, well, you can accept, you said you wanna do it, then you need to do a vote.
All right, motion and a vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? If not, and then do I need to accept the motion? Now?
Sure.
Yeah, well, I'll accept that then.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thanks.
Same vote, isn't it?
Yeah, right, so now the Vice Chair.
Now nominations for Vice Chair.
Nominations for Vice Chair.
And then nominate Paulus.
You wanna keep doing it, Paulus?
I will.
All right?
Nominate her.
Any other nominations?
Do you have a second?
Second.
First and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Awesome.
Quick question, are we gonna get somebody else?
Well, was somebody else supposed to come today?
Orin Moyer, who was appointed by the Board as the next member. And he was contacted.
That don't affect, that don't affect, but we just voted on it, all done, ain't here.
We're still in form.
You're in form.
Okay. And how about Kyle?
Kyle is the alternate.
Okay, he's gonna remain the alternate.
His door's not there, is it?
No.
Door's, door's, she retired.
She retired at the end of the meeting.
Okay, all right.
Irish goodbye. Anything else with the reorganization?
No, you're gonna continue to meet every other, on the even months, on the third Tuesday of the month at seven o'clock PM, it's already been advertised.
Perfect. All right, dispense with the reading of the minutes, minutes are all out, entertain a motion to approve them.
So moved.
First and a second?
First.
All in favor?
Aye. Who moved to dispense with the reading of the minutes?
You didn't, you need to vote it all.
All right, so I need a motion to dispense with them.
I'll do first.
So moved means I...
You brought it up, and I first, and then you...
I moved too quick. So John, John's the first, Paulus is the second, and then, all in favor?
Aye. Aye, aye.
Approval of the minutes, I jumped over dispensing and went right to approval, and so you approved the minutes, but we didn't get there yet, so now we're, now we're at approval of the minutes.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yep. So I'm entertaining a motion for approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Eric.
I'm second.
And Paulus is the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Public comments outside of the old business, that you're already on the agenda for.
Is there anyone on the list?
Nope. All right, old business, Ron's Construction H&amp;K Group Cement Plant.
That is finally, I think, coming together, I'm gonna, I had checked with SDE today to make sure the revisions to the agreement were acceptable, SDE has no comments, so I'm gonna reach out to the attorney for Ron's probably tomorrow, I'll let them know that we're ready to move forward, so that's probably gonna come up, at this point, that's really with the supervisors, I believe, I don't think it's really here anymore, but that's where it is.
Commonwealth PA Snyder Subdivision.
I think he's settling, he's settling next week.
Okay.
All right, so hopefully, we'll be able to take that off after next, after the next month.
I guess he's gonna combine the two lots, it's an iron.
Okay.
He has to.
Is that it?
For a driveway, he needs access.
Okay.
That's why he's doing it in the first place.
Could we motion or do something to, have we give approval if he puts both together, or you gotta wait till?
He's gotta come back.
Okay, okay.
He's gotta come back, I need to see what that driveway looks like.
Oh, okay.
South Scoobal Property Group?
Yes. Okay, if I just go up here?
Yep.
Good evening, I'm Mike Bring Cash with Bring Cash and Associates, so we've been working on this one for quite a while, I think we were here probably earlier last year, went through, actually, initially, we had to get special exception to do all of this for the use, we got through a round of review comments and realized we had some dimensional issues with zoning, went through, got all of our variances, a lot of them had to do with driveway grades, things like that, spacing between the buildings, so, got, again, got all of the variances, we submitted, resubmitted a package here like late fall, and got a review letter from Steve, and I think we addressed the Planning Commission via Zoom last month, seems like our letter's really down to this point, is we have, we have a bunch of waivers that we could talk about here in a minute, but it's really down to getting our NPDES permit, and also, and again, I apologize if anyone's unfamiliar with the plan. So this is, this is basically the site here, this is Route 61, this is Chappelle Road, we're looking at putting in about 60,000 square feet of self-storage, divided into, I guess at this point, it's one, six, nine buildings. So, again, last month, we talked about, the plans had just been submitted to County Conservation District for NPDES, I think Steve wanted to see kind of around the comments, to see what they had, we received those comments last week from County Conservation, we had a Zoom call with them, walked through every comment, and resubmitted, so I think we're in pretty good shape. And again, I know Steve's on the Zoom here, I don't know if we wanna talk through, if we could talk through the waivers?
Mike, yeah, I can jump in, I agree with everything that Mike just said, even though it's a long letter, a lot of these comments are carrier, were comments, and I just kinda kept a record of the comments as we went through the various submissions, so, everything zoning-wise has been addressed, we are at the point where it's, you know, we're pretty much down to the waiver request, so if you skip ahead to page five, under SALDA, we had a number of waivers, number one is the combined preliminary final submission, I'm fine with that, comment number three, Mike, did you update your waiver request letter to include that, or did you just revise the plan, or are you going to?
So number three...
It's just a, it's just a location map scale, it's a very minor waiver.
Okay, yeah, that should have been, that's gonna be updated on the, that's updated on the plan, so no, we're not requesting a waiver for that.
Oh, okay, all right, so we don't need to act on that one. Moving along to page six, actually, page seven, we have traffic impact study, utilities impact study, recreation impact study, water resources study, and then curb and sidewalk, these are the, those are the waivers that they're asking for under SALDA, and then under stormwater, they are requesting a waiver to allow the pond berm width to be five feet instead of eight feet wide, and side slopes to be 50% instead of 33%. So, I'm on board with all those, really, the issues that I was, I was held up on the last time, as Mike described, I did wanna get a review back from the Conservation District relative to the ENS plans, and the BCSM plan submissions, you know, I did go through the letter, I really don't have any issues with it, and then, the other issue was, under stormwater comments, the buffer issues relative to the locations of the infiltration facilities and the adjacent property, and it's my understanding, after going back and forth with Mike today, that they're in the process of revising the plans to comply with the buffer requirement, so no waiver relative to that requirement will be required. So, I think we're at a point where I, I'm on board with the waivers that they're requesting, again, you know, the letters, as long as it is, because there's been some turnover on the PC, I just wanted to keep a record of everything that's kinda been discussed so far, so, I really don't have anything else, I'm having supportable waivers, I'm sure Mike's asking for recommendation for conditional approval, that's correct, right, Mike?
Yes, that's correct, yes.
And I would support that as well, unless there's other concerns by the PC, and I'm open for questions, and I'm sure Mike is.
What would be the condition?
The conditions?
Yes.
Anything outstanding in the letter, you know, there's some stuff that they, like, for example, you know, I did, you know, I just described the buffer issue, in other words, a couple of the underground, or a couple of the infiltration facilities that they're proposing do not meet the required buffer distances in the stormwater management ordinance, so the condition, one of the conditions would be that, you know, they're going to do what they said, and on their next submission, they're going to have a design that's revised that meets that, obviously, I'm going to have to check that, and anything else outstanding in the letter, but everything else outstanding in the letter is pretty boilerplate stuff, signatures and whatnot.
What's the timeline on getting the plan updated?
Yeah, so, so we just resubmit it back to Conservation District, and obviously, if they have any further revisions, we're kinda trying to get it all into one final plan, so that they have like two plans that are like 99% there, so yeah, I would think, as far as anything further with the township, I mean, we can get that stuff back immediately, I would think we'd have our, if we had any further comments, probably in the next 30 days from Conservation District.
I guess what I'm thinking, is there any harm in having you come back, because we meet again next month, because next month's an even month, is having you come back with the plan, with the updated plan, and with a letter that outlines the specific waivers that you're asking for?
Well, we did submit a, we did submit a letter with the waivers, I do have, I do have all of those, I'm sorry, I start to sort of...
That was submitted a while ago, Russell, I think that was submitted back in December.
Oh, it was last year, so that's all done, right? And you took, there was some that you don't need that are on this letter?
No, this letter is current.
This letter is current.
Russell, some of the things that I said that they might need waivers for, they have subsequently revised the plans such that they're compliant now, so they don't need a waiver, if that makes sense?
Yeah, that should be the current, the current list of waivers.
Okay, all right, and then, I mean, what's the feeling of the Board in terms of, are you, are you feeling, are you in favor of approving with, recommending with condition this evening?
I mean, if Steve says that this stuff isn't critical...
Like I said, I know...
You can grant the waivers and then the conditional uses when you come back next month?
Well, the, well, the conditional approval would send it to the supervisors, now, when does this plan expire?
I'm not sure, I believe we had at least, well, we had at least an extension, so...
Yeah, I believe so.
Here's what's going on, guys, I know, kinda looking at this plan, you see it, you see a 14-page letter, but again, if you go through the letter carefully, you'll note that, you know, a lot of the comments ultimately, you know, are comments that they've addressed, and I'm simply keeping record of that. Obviously, it's up to you guys what you wanna do, but, you know, I, I'm totally fine with recommendation for conditional approval, if you wanna kick it the next month, that's up to you guys, but I'm on board with that, and I'm on board with the waivers that they're asking for, they've done everything that we asked, so, I don't know that an extra month benefits, but that's, that's up to the Planning Commission.
So, why don't we start with the waivers, so the waivers are what's, as was, as was described, I'll pass this letter around, in case anyone, anyone on the Planning Commission has any questions relative to the waivers.
Again, if I could just explain this, basically, this, we're gonna say a minor revision, he's talking about the buffers, we've met, we've met the state requirements, it's a requirement of how far away the infiltration facility needs to be to a well, okay, so there's a well not on our property, and it took us a little while to kinda figure out where that was even at, but we've met the state requirements, that's not an issue there, but the ordinance says ask you 100 feet, so that was one of the things we had talked about, we said, well, maybe we'll request a waiver, and rather than put that on the township with, you know, something, we started talking about drinking water, even though it's a requirement that exceeds state requirements, talking with Steve, I said, you know what, we have plenty of volume in our stormwater, that we're just not gonna count the volume in these areas within 100 feet, so it's really not even so much a change, it's just how we're presenting the county.
I told Mike that you guys probably, and I, I told him that we'd be unlikely to support a waiver of that buffer requirement unless, you know, unless the property owner was supportive of it, and rather than, rather than, you know, get into that situation, Mike decided that they could revise the plan to comply with the buffer requirement, so that the waiver was no, no longer necessary as an option.
And you're comfortable with that approach, Steve?
Yes, yep, provided that the revised plans, you know, corroborate that.
I don't think there's anything in these plans that we haven't given waivers, you know, where we're at, and we've given waivers for this before, and moved on with Steve's letter, I think it's just important we make sure we make a condition on Steve's letter.
Yeah, and we're, we're okay with that, again, we've gone through his letter, and, you know, he's absolutely right, a lot of this stuff is just, it was the original comment, he said how we addressed it, and it just, it's lengthy, but it is a good record of what's gone on here through the last several months of, you know, comments and revisions.
Okay, so we have to go through the waivers one by one?
You can do them as a package.
Want to pass that back?
Yeah.
I just wanted you all to see the letter.
All right, so we are entertaining a motion for a waiver request by South Scoobal Property Group in regards to Sections 308, do I, am I gonna read off all of them? In regards to Section 308 and 316, the submission of a separate preliminary plan, number two, Section 513 dash point one, point C, traffic impact study, Sections 514, point one, point C, and 5.4, 514, point two, utilities impact study, Sections 514, point one, point C, and 514, point three, recreation study, Section 515, water resources study, Section 602, point three, curb installation, Section 602, point four, sidewalk installation, SWMO Section 309, point C, point four, basin slopes of 33%, SWMO Section 307, stream bank erosion, and SWMO Section 309, point C, point three, basin berm.
So you're entertaining a motion to recommend granting those waivers?
Correct. Paulus is first?
I'm second.
And John's second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
And the second issue then is whether you want, whether you want to recommend, recommend approval conditioned on compliance with all, with all the outstanding issues in Steve's letter, what's the date on that letter, Steve?
December 6th.
December, December 6th, okay, I, yeah, December 6th, 2024, I didn't, I wasn't sure if there was a new one, and that the plan, you know, meets your, meets Steve's approval.
So we're entertaining a motion to recommend conditional approval, provided the applicant complies with all of the outstanding requests in Steve's December 6th letter. That sufficient?
I'm with that motion.
Paulus is first?
Second.
Eric's the second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Good to go.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
All right, Raywell Real Estate.
Can you just double-check on when the expiration date on the plan is, to see if you need to request an extension? Thank you.
Yep, take it easy.
Did you guys have copies of what I, what we had talked about?
None of us.
This is the January 14th letter from Steve?
Yeah.
Should be the longest one.
Yeah.
No, we don't have enough here for one or anybody, but...
Steve, you wanna go down to your bold comments one by one, or?
Sure, I'll run through it. So, what's being proposed here, I think everybody remembers what was, what was originally presented, the, that strip of five apartments on Woodland Avenue, or Woodland Road, is it Woodland Avenue or Woodland Road, Woodland Road, I guess, Ray is proposing to demolish those exist, that existing building, and essentially replace them with five, five new apartments, so basically a new apartment building, and the proposed building will be a little bit bigger than what exists now, so going through the zoning comments, like I said, the existing building's smaller than what's being proposed, but it's still five units, it's in the C2 district, where the apartment use isn't permitted by right, however, it's an existing non-conforming use, it's been there for a long time, so it's legal, so really, there shouldn't be an issue with continuing the use, I really don't see it as an expansion of a non-conforming use, even though the building's a little bit bigger, it's still five units, and it's such a small difference in building size that, you know, that whole kinda, that whole area is kinda being used for that apartment use now, so I don't think there, it's really an expansion of the use. That said, comment number two, there is a stipulation for non-conforming structures, that if they're demolished, they need to be reconstructed conforming to all dimensional requirements, so comment number two there under zoning, it looks like Ray would need a dimensional variance, because he would be putting the building back within the 25-foot front yard setback, however, he would not be any more non-conforming than what's there now, which I think would be favorable in terms of his zoning request. Parking, parking's deficient in terms of what would be required for five, five apartment units, but again, since it's existing, I think as long as whatever is ultimately proposed is equal to or more than what's out there now, will be, you know, acceptable and considered, you know, a non, a non-conformity, assuming that he can't get ten parking spaces, which I can't imagine he will, but I do believe, and maybe Ryan can speak to this, I think he will be required probably to put, put in at least one ADA space, is that?
Correct.
Would that be the case, Ryan?
That is correct, yes.
And it'll probably, I'm guessing it'll have to be van accessible?
Correct.
Okay, and Ray, do you have any issue with that? It sounded like you thought you'd be able to make the parking work?
No, I could put an ADA parking space in.
Gotcha. Obviously, you'll have to start to work through the layout issues and engineering to figure out how you're gonna get those in there, but, you know, that can, that can come later. So, I think in terms of zoning, I think what he's looking at is the, just comment number two, the dimensional variance for the front yard, I think otherwise, he's pretty much good to go, I didn't do a comprehensive SALDA review, I did note under SALDA that the property is currently served by what appeared to be on lot septic, and it looks like the septic system's actually in Hamburg, is that right?
Correct.
Yeah, the drain field is in Hamburg, and that system was installed, if I remember serves me right, it was in the early 2000s, so it's a, it's a good system, it's not something that's, that's way old.
Right, and I don't know, Ryan, do you know, that, is that something that would have to be tested?
Scott McCaffrey, I believe, was looking into it, I believe he was looking into it on both Hamburg's side and Windsor's side, because he serves both municipalities, so he, I believe he was saying that as long as the system met criteria, but they would need to show a second area, DEP requested that.
Right, that was with, that was with the subdivision plan.
Correct.
We are in the, we're also in the process of talking to Hamburg Borough about getting sewer up there.
Correct, they are in the process of talking with Hamburg Borough, and that is something they are considering.
Yeah, the Borough told us they would consider it, but it, it takes a while for that consideration to become reality.
Yes, yeah, it would be a little, it would be a little for them to look into it, yes.
I hear their engineer there's a real jerk, too.
Say what the zoning guy...
I don't really, I don't think I have anything else, so I, my recommendation would be that, you know, the next step would be to get before the zoning hearing board, I don't know if the Planning Commission wants to take a position one way or the other, Russell, maybe you wanna add your thoughts there, you know, I don't, I don't think they're obligated to support it or not support it, I really don't have a position on it one way or the other, but that's up to the Planning Commission if they wanna take a position in favor of it, or just stay neutral.
Does your coworker behind you have a position? So just to frame, to frame this, this is in a little bit of a different posture than some of the other things that come to you, this is a sketch plan review, so this is not asking you to do anything, it was really just a, you know, a request by the applicant for, for the township to review it and sort of give some feedback, so, at this point, you know, there's no action for you to take tonight, you know, but it sounds like the next step is applying for a variance with the zoning hearing board, the question is, do you wanna take a position one way or the other, and it sounds like Steve is not feeling like it's necessary to do that, I'm not seeing any reason one way or the other, I don't really have, you know, an opinion as to whether you need to or not, so it's really up to you.
I mean, from the experience I do have, the concern comes down to, if we let this gentleman do it, when the next person comes and says, I wanna knock down my building that's 10 feet off the road, do we have to let them do it too?
There's an argument for being consistent, you know, you don't want to favor anyone, and, you know, and that may suggest that you take no position, because it's, that decision is for the zoning hearing board.
What, do we...
My, my position is I wanna reuse my foundation in the front, build on that same foundation. And that's, I do have a little bit of conflict if I move back further?
Right.
Kind of the slopes?
Yeah.
I would, and that's not to cut you off, I think this is how it should be handled, I think something way more than this, a very detailed, comprehensive plan should be submitted to, with a zoning application, so that a zoning application can be properly denied, and then go for a zoning hearing, because I think you need to see what comes out of that zoning hearing...
Cause I think you need to see what comes out of that zoning hearing and then go in front of this. Before you do anything, I'm, I'm just saying, I think the most important thing is the zoning hearing looks at all aspects of this building, but not just from a plan like this.
Yeah.
Showing parking, showing which way the cars are going to come out of the parking, showing exact size of the building.
Dimensions.
And then occupability. So I guess my question would be from the township's perspective, if our zoning requires when this property is demolished, that it would then need to be moved back fifteen feet further than from the road to where it is. If somewhere down the road, the, the road is getting widened or like, at some point, do we take on any liability? If somebody parks in front of this building and now they're right on the edge of the road and they get hit by a car and we didn't allow, we didn't force the applicant to push the building back further, like, are we putting ourselves in a position of liability because, I mean, I don't know, is that far-fetched?
No, no.
The way that it is now, it's a non-conforming use, but nobody here was, allowed that to be put where it is and.
Right, but that, that's.
You could put curbing in and people could park along the curb, you know, they, they do that.
I think the reality is that if you're trying to, if you were trying to, are you saying that you want curbs? You want, you want to have?
Sidewalk all the way to Hamburg.
Yeah.
I, I can provide parking that they can park off the side of the building that, but nobody can, would have to park in front of the building.
I, I think, I think that what Ryan's saying is that it needs to be further developed. I think we, we had recommended the sketch plan because we didn't want him to put, you know, a ton of money into this if the answer was going to be no, no matter what. I don't think the answer's, I don't think that's the answer, but I think that a more, a more detailed plan and.
I can, I can do a more detailed plan. I'm, I'm really just in the stage of feeling things out. If this is something that can fly, then.
But I think the biggest, most important aspect of this is it comes down to the zoning hearing board. That's what's going to hang you up. Oh, because, you know, they could approve or deny them, then where do you go? If there's, if there's aspects that they deny for zoning variance that you need, then it would hang it up here before it got here. So I, but I think what that's going to require is just a little more detail because we're going to need to see all aspects of the zoning ordinance and I think a little bit of the building code so we know what we're looking at.
And it's like you had Mike Burge.
I'm not talking, uh, these are studio apartments and they are going to be one-person apartments, it's not going to be family apartments.
Right.
Uh, right now there's four of them occupied and only two people drive.
Ryan, Ryan, I think I get what you're saying and I, I don't disagree with you, but I mean, i- if Ray chooses to submit kind of more of a concept plan and wants to go before the zoning hearing board, there's always, he's running the risk of maybe having to go back to the zoning hearing board after he submits a detailed engineered plan, but that's kind of the risk that he's taking.
Not, not detailed engineered, Steve, not detailed engineered, but just, just showing, just showing us where, where the parking, where it's going to, just showing spots, eight, you know, eight feet, all that, just, just simple meeting the zoning criteria. And then just showing the building with an accurate step, that, that's all, but just so we get in front of the zoning hearing board and we sit here and then he gets the approval for the, you know, how far the building, the variance, he gets that and he comes before because all I'm saying is then if you had the board go, wow, we don't, you know, I don't really agree with that, then that's shot, but not, not full engineered, same kind of scale, simp, I mean, I, I draw plans like that.
Are you suggesting just more detail for his plan to go before the zoning hearing board?
Well, just so.
I, I can draw a plan like that.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I mean. You, you're drawing it, you don't need it engineered.
Yeah.
Just something you're drawing with a, that, we have a little bit of a concept of when we get in front, hey, the cars are, this is where they're parking, you know, that, that's, they're coming, you know, whatever, the, this is actually, the front doors are here, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
That kind of stuff. That, that's all.
And on, on the backside, I did, I, I did the next page, I did a.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's.
Concept of, you know, what it would.
Yeah, so e- even, even this, you know, I, I think we should just go before them and then get a, get a feel of how the zoning hearing board feels. But we should do, fill out the application.
For, for the variance or are you saying for a zoning application?
The variance.
The variance.
Mm-hmm.
So, okay, so, so, cause there, cause before you said.
Yeah, so zoning now with the permit, but now I think if we just let him do the variance application, I can just submit a letter with the variance application.
Okay.
I just would like a little more detail of this.
I can do that.
And you can, you can draw it.
Yeah.
I don't need an engineered plan. I draw with crayons all the time. It looks fine.
Do you want it in red, do you want it in green?
I like orange, nothing wrong with that. That's why I'm a flyer stan. But that, that would be sufficient. I'll get you act, application. I believe they're online. But at the end of the day, it's going to ultimately go to zoning board and it's going to be up to them. That, that's all I'm saying. So basically down to a narrow point, all I'm saying is I just would like it to get in front of that zoning hearing board, even though I think this is the right way we did it. He brought a sketch plan, Steve and I got to look at it, kind of just give a little bit of a feedback to you so you know what's coming and then now it's going to go in front of the zoning hearing and then it'll come back. So I, I, this is not time wasted, this is time well spent. Cause you can look at this and go, man, there's a lot of issues, just a lot, a lot of issues. But Steve and myself aren't saying there's a lot, a lot of issues, we're saying there's things here that could work, you know, and there's things we just need, that might, you need some tweaking in front of the zoning board.
I don't have anything else, guys.
Okay. So next step is to fill out the, the variance application.
Mm-hmm. And then, what, a season drawing?
Yeah, just a little bit of.
Sketch plan.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, and I'll do it like I do my building reports. I'll, I'll send that to you.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. You want this back?
Thank you, yeah, I'll take him.
Yep.
Russell, I think we should put it in minutes that the planning commission is recommending.
Pay you an application.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can put it, you, you can put it in minutes that the, the, the planning commission reviewed the sketch plan and.
It's probably somewhere there.
And advise the applicant, the applicant to, to pursue a variance application. Don't want to use the word recommend because I'll have some different conversations. I'll send you an application and you can, um, send it back and then you'll just mail a check into the township. Or you can drop it off at ST two if you want and I can, I can bring you here too.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, Russell, that would be section four oh six point six, that's where the variance would be more according to Steve's.
Yes.
Yes.
So we, we need a motion in a second to recommend that.
Well, no, we don't.
We don't?
Because we're, we're not, the board is not taking any action
Okay.
on this because it's a sketch plan, but I think that having it in minutes will be discussed.
Okay, just.
We s- we suggested.
Yeah, but the reason I don't want you to use the word recommend is because that's an official action in this body and that's not what you're doing.
Got you.
Uh, Hamburg self-storage, we kicked it to next month. Did you get the extension letter?
Yes, it's been, it's been accepted by the Board of Supervisors.
Yeah.
And it's in the planning commission minutes from December that there would be, it's recommended for approval.
Okay.
So that would be on the agenda for the Board of Supervisors meeting in February.
Yes.
Any new business? Planning commission concerns? Other than how cold it is?
When did you get back from Florida?
Uh, unfortunately on Thursday.
How did you go back to Florida?
I was, I asked my wife if we could stay an extra week. This is pretty terrible. Okay.